Good afternoon. It is 4:02 PM, Tuesday, November 16th. This is a meeting of the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, also referred to as the Brookhaven IDA. My name is Frederick C. Braun III, and I am Chairman of the IDA. I am joined today by the following board members, and please acknowledge that you are on the call. Martin G. Callahan III.
Here.
Felix J. Gucci Jr.
Here.
Gary Polakowski.
Here.
Anne Marie Scheit.
Here.
And Frank C. Trotta.
Present.
A quorum is present. Also with us today is Lisa Mulligan, the IDA's Chief Executive Officer. Today's meeting has been convened in accordance with Chapter 417 of the New York Laws of 2021, specifically Senate Number 5001 and Assembly 4001, effective September 2nd, 2021 through January 15th, 2022, permitting local governments to hold public hearings by telephone and video conference. Today's meeting is being held electronically via video conference call instead of in-person for the public to physically attend. Members of the public may watch, listen to, and participate in the public hearing by making oral comments and/or by submitting written comments concerning the matters presented at the public hearing. The public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in today's public hearing via both Zoom and telephone. The instructions for logging in and/or calling in have been provided in a public notice, which was published in Newsday, mailed to affected property owners, and published on the IDA's website for all to review. To view, excuse me. I've been advised that the link for this public hearing is active and working. Once again, you can log on to this webinar by going to and entering webinar ID 84317126270 and passcode 741056. You can also call into the Zoom meeting via telephone by calling 1-646-558-8656 and entering the webinar ID 84317126270 and the passcode 741056. Let me repeat those instructions. You can log into the webinar by going to zoom.us/join and entering webinar ID 84317126270 and passcode 741056. You can also call into the Zoom meeting via telephone by calling 1-646-558-8656 and entering the webinar ID 84317126270 and the passcode 741056. If you have any questions during the hearing or by accessing the Zoom video conference, you can email alanbelniak@vhb.com. VHB being Victor Hotel Bravo. Please note that this public hearing is being recorded. I will now introduce the IDA's counsel, Mr. Harvey Basunda, to discuss the topics of tonight's public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. Good evening. My name is Harvey Basunder with the firm of Margolin Basunder LLP, and we are counsel to the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency with respect to tonight's hearing. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to Section 203 of the New York State eminent domain procedure law in order to outline the purpose, proposed location, or alternate locations of a public project taking place near the Ronconkuma Station of the Long Island Railroad. We will also consider other pertinent information, such as maps, descriptions of the properties which the IDA is considering acquiring, and of adjacent parcels. Any person in attendance shall be given a reasonable opportunity to present an oral or written statement and submit other documents concerning the proposed public project. A record of the hearing shall be kept, including written statements which are submitted. Copies of the record will be available to the public for examination without cost during normal business hours at the principal office of the Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency located at 1 Independence Hill, Farmingville, New York, 11738, and at the office of the Suffolk County Clerk located at 310, that's 310 Center Drive, Riverhead, New York, 11901. Copies shall be made available on the industrial developments website, Let me repeat that. and produced upon written request and payment of the cost thereof. The purpose of the hearing is to present and gather information related to the potential acquisition of property located in the vicinity of the Ronconkuma Station of the Long Island Railroad through the industrial developments agency's statutory authority and power of eminent domain. The issues to be discussed include: One, the public use, benefit, or purpose to be served by the proposed project; the approximate location of the proposed project, and the reasons for the selection of that location; Three, the general effect of the proposed project on the environment and the residents of the locality; and Four, such other factors as the IDA considers relevant. And you'll note that I will refer to either the industrial development agency or the IDA. The board will hear from various speakers regarding the public purpose, the location, and the environmental impact in connection with the proposed acquisition of property. Documents will be offered for the record, which address those issues. Speakers will include any members of the public who wish to speak regarding the relevant issues tonight. The hearing will be kept open for a period of 30 days until December 16th, 2021, for the board to accept written comments from anyone who wishes to submit them. All written comments should be mailed to the IDA's office at 1 Independence Hill, Farmingville, New York, 11738, or email to jlynce@brookhavenny.gov. Let me repeat that. It is J. as in Jacob, L.I.N.S.E. at brookhavenny.gov. After that 30-day period has elapsed, the board will review the minutes of the hearing, the documents presented, and will consider all of the oral presentations and written comments which have been submitted. Thereafter, based upon the record, the board will vote on whether to take any action to acquire any of the property that is the subject of this meeting, consider the adoption of its determination and findings, and publish same in accordance with the requirements of Section 204 of the eminent domain procedure law. As Mr. Braun mentioned, this hearing is being conducted by Zoom pursuant to Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021. I would like to submit that law into the record as Exhibit 1.
It's marked "submitted."
The IDA's legal notice requirements relative to the public hearing have been met by publishing the public notice in five successive issues of Newsday between October 31st, Sunday, October 31st, and Thursday, November 4th, and by mailing the public notice to each of the affected property owners by certified mail. I would like to submit the notice of the public hearing into the record as Exhibit 2.
It's marked "submitted."
The cover letters accompanying the notices of public hearing that were sent to the owners of the property being discussed at this hearing, we would like to submit as Exhibit 3.
That's marked "submitted" as well.
An affidavit of mailing, copies of the return receipts, and several letters returned as undeliverable, we would like to submit as Exhibit 4.
That's marked "submitted."
The affidavit of publication from Newsday, we would submit as Exhibit 5.
That's marked "submitted."
And a map of the area that we'll be discussing will be submitted as Exhibit 6.
That's marked "submitted" as well.
In addition to the publication and mailings, the Industrial Development Agency posted the public notice on its website on or about October 29th, 2021, and the notice has remained posted through today. The following parcels will not be considered at this time, and it will define them by tax map number. Tax map number 200-799-3-39. Tax map number 200-799-3-36. Tax map number 200-799-3-35. Tax map number 200-799-3-34. Tax map number 200-799-3-33.001. And tax map number 200-799-3-32. All the documents submitted to the board at tonight's hearing will be available at the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency's office, located again at 1 Independence Hill, Farmingville, New York, 11738, and at the office of the Suffolk County Clerk located at 310 Center Drive, Riverhead, New York, 11901, after tonight's hearing. A transcribed record of tonight's hearing will be available at the Industrial Development Agency's office, on the IDA's website, and at the Suffolk County Clerk's office as well. Retired New York State Court of Claims Judge and former acting Supreme Court Judge, Justice Mark Cohen, is present to facilitate this public hearing as moderator. Please listen to him carefully, as he will be giving important information for those who wish to speak and/or submit comments. Thank you very much. I will turn it over to Justice Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Basunder. Good evening. My name is Mark Cohen, and I'll be moderating tonight's public hearing on behalf of the board. As Mr. Basunder mentioned, tonight's public hearing is being held pursuant to the eminent domain procedure law to hear information and obtain public comment regarding the potential acquisition of real property near the Ronconkuma Station of the Long Island Railroad. Anyone who would like to speak at this hearing should use the "raise hand" feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen. When we arrive at the point in the hearing for public comments, I will recognize persons wishing to make a statement. Please state your name, address, and interest in the proceeding. We may ask you to spell your name as well. I will then announce your name as indicated on your Zoom profile, and you will have three minutes to comment on the issues before the board. Please be mindful that you will have an opportunity to comment. If there are questions, you may state them, and they'll be addressed at the appropriate time in the proceeding. However, direct questions to any board member will similarly be addressed at the appropriate time during the hearing. In addition, those questions may be presented in your written submissions. For anyone who is attending this hearing strictly by telephone as opposed to by video conference, you may dial *9 at any time to be added to the list of speakers. At the appointed time, I will call out your phone number and alert you that you may begin to share your comments. To become unmuted, you will dial *6 at that time. All public comment, whether by video conference or by telephone, will be given three minutes to speak. A time clock will appear on the Zoom screen to let you know how much time has elapsed since your comment period started. No one person will be given more than one opportunity to speak at this hearing. As this hearing is being transcribed by a stenographer, when you're called upon to speak again, would you please state and spell your full name to ensure the accuracy of tonight's record? Periodically, the instructions for how to be added to the list of speakers will appear in the chat function of Zoom. The chat function in tonight's meeting is a one-way communication path. It's being used to give you information, but not to accept any information from attendees. Whether you wish to speak or not, the IDA is providing you with an opportunity to submit written comments to the IDA during the public hearing and within 30 days after it. To do so, please email them to jlynce@brookhavenny, B-R-O-O-K-H-A-V-E-N-N-Y, that's one word, dot gov, or mail them to Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, 1 Independence Hill, Farmingville, New York, 11738. And finally, as Mr. Braun has already indicated, this public hearing is being recorded. Tonight's first speaker is Mr. John Wagner. Mr. Wagner, would you please introduce yourself, spell your name, and begin your remarks?
Good afternoon. My name is John M. Wagner. It's spelled J-O-W-N. M is Matthew. W-A-G-N-E-R. I am an attorney and a member of Stillman Ballin Adler &amp; Hyman LLP, the attorneys for Ronconkuma LLC, which is the town designated master developer of the Ronconkuma Hub project. My office is at 100 Motor Parkway, Hop Hop, New York. The Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, which I'll refer to as the IDA, is holding this hearing with respect to the IDA's proposed condemnation of several parcels for the Ronconkuma Hub project, which involves comprehensive redevelopment of approximately 54 acres of land within the Town of Brookhaven that include and surround the Ronconkuma Station of the Long Island Railroad. The Ronconkuma Hub project is generally bounded south by the railroad, west by Garrity Avenue and Hawkins Avenue, north by Union Avenue, and east by the Fairfield at Ronconkuma Apartment Complex. As the board knows, as part of the condemnation process, the IDA pursuant to Section 204 of the State eminent domain procedure law must ultimately prepare a determination and findings as to, among other things, one, the public use, benefit, or purpose to be served by the proposed public project, and two, the general effect of the proposed project on the environment and residents of the locality. I will speak as to these two issues. First, with respect to the public use, benefit, or purpose to be served by the Ronconkuma Hub project. Since approximately 2007, the Town of Brookhaven has recognized that the Ronconkuma Hub project area is in a blighted condition and in urgent need of comprehensive economic revitalization and redevelopment. To facilitate such redevelopment, the town has evaluated the hub project area and found that it was blighted and in need of redevelopment, prepared and adopted several comprehensive land use plans, studies, and zoning regulations to remediate the blighted condition of the hub, and also to define and facilitate hub redevelopment. sought and designated a private master developer for the hub, and expressly empowered the IDA to effectuate and implement town urban renewal projects and plans. More specifically, in April 2008 and March 2009, the town prepared a two-phase Ronconkuma Hub planning study to revitalize the Ronconkuma Hub area. In August 2010, the Town Board prepared a draft Ronconkuma Hub transit-oriented development, draft land use, and implementation plan. Beginning in 2011, in an effort to ensure that the town's planning efforts would result in actual redevelopment of the blighted hub area, the Town Board decided to seek private developer input. In this regard, in January of 2011, the town issued a request for expressions of interest, an RFEI for that purpose. In September of 2011, the town issued a request for qualifications, an RFQ, for a master developer for the Ronconkuma Hub. On February 7th, 2012, the Town Board designated Trek Ronconkuma LLC as master developer for the Ronconkuma Hub. And in September 2012, the town executed a master development designation agreement, an MDDA, with Trek Ronconkuma LLC for the Ronconkuma Hub, under which agreement the Ronconkuma LLC now serves as master developer. The Town Board, after review of preliminary plans received as part of the RFEI and RFQ processes, prepared a BLIGHT study for the Ronconkuma Hub area dated September 2012. At this point, I asked that Exhibit 7, which is the first page of the BLIGHT study, be put on the screen. Okay, there we have it. I will also note that a full copy of this BLIGHT study that you see before you, and every exhibit identified at this hearing can be found and reviewed on the IDA's website at brookhavenida.org. Once on the IDA website, you can click the "News and Events" tab, and then scroll down and click on the link entitled 11-16-21 Ronconkuma Hub Eminent Domain Public Hearing Notice. That link will take you to a page showing each of today's hearing exhibits. Click on any one of the exhibit links to view a full copy of the exhibit. I respectfully identify the entirety of the September 2012 BLIGHT study, the first page of which you see on the screen, as Exhibit 7 for this hearing. Now, going back to the chronology, it should be noted that the BLIGHT study identified several conditions in the Ronconkuma Hub as evidence of blighted conditions in the hub. These conditions included: vacant and partially vacant properties and buildings; significant underutilization of development potential; deteriorated buildings; inadequate curb and sidewalk areas; lack of appropriate drainage and sewerage infrastructure; and incompatible land uses; and also aesthetic and visual character of the area. The BLIGHT study specifically concluded that the Ronconkuma Hub area, based upon field observations and the data collected, is sufficiently blighted to warrant the preparation of an urban renewal plan in accordance with Article 15 of the New York State General Municipal Law. After review of the BLIGHT study, the Town Board on September 20th, 2012, by Resolution 2012-804, designated the Ronconkuma Hub as, quote, "appropriate for urban renewal" pursuant to Article 15 of the New York State General Municipal Law, unquote, and further authorized preparation of an urban renewal plan. Now, please bring up the next exhibit, which is number eight. There you see the first page of the urban renewal plan. Following the BLIGHT study and the Town Board's Resolution 2012-804, the Town Board had prepared an urban renewal plan for the Ronconkuma Hub dated October 2013, the entirety of which I'd like to designate as Exhibit 8 for this hearing. The stated purpose of the urban renewal plan as set forth on Page 1 of that plan was to facilitate the redevelopment of the Ronconkuma Hub area as a transit-oriented development, TOD area, featuring a mix of higher-density residential development, commercial, hospitality, institutional, office, and retail uses, conference, entertainment, and exhibition venues, and public-designated outdoor spaces. The urban renewal plan further stated that such TOD development was designed to both complement and benefit from the presence of the Ronconkuma Railroad Station and its associated commuter-passenger volumes. At Page 24, the urban renewal plan identified several so-called methods for implementation of the plan. These implementation methods included: a recommendation of rezoning of the entire project area to a TOD district in order to facilitate the recommended redevelopment, and two, acquisition of property within the project area for redevelopment purposes, including both the purchase of individual properties by the master developer, and, most significantly for this hearing, possible use of eminent domain by the town. Now, please bring up the next exhibit, number nine. Now, in connection with proposed TOD rezoning of the Ronconkuma Hub to implement the urban renewal plan, the town prepared and updated Ronconkuma Hub Transit-Oriented Development TOD Land Use and Implementation Plan for the Ronconkuma Hub dated October 2013, the first page of which you see on the screen. I would like to designate the entire land use and development plan as Exhibit 9 for this hearing. On June 24, 2014, the Town Board took several actions. Specifically, it adopted the urban renewal plan, adopted the land use and implementation plan, adopted the Ronconkuma Hub TOD zoning district, which encompassed the entire Ronconkuma Hub area, including the parcels that are the subject of this condemnation hearing, and adopted the Ronconkuma Hub TOD zoning regulations. I note at this point that the Ronconkuma Hub TOD zoning regulations can be found in Article 23, that's XXIII, of Chapter 85 of the Town Code. Please bring up the next exhibit, number 10. Now, on May 27th, 2021, the Town Board adopted Resolution 2021-368, which you see on the screen, which designated the IDA as an agency that may effectuate and implement urban renewal projects and plans in the town pursuant to the IDA's statutory powers for projects to have an application with the IDA. I would like to designate entirety of Resolution 2021-368 as Exhibit 10 for this hearing. Please bring up the next exhibit, number 11. Lastly, on August 2nd, 2021, the IDA entered into a Ronconkuma Hub condemnation/acquisition agreement with Ronconkuma LLC, which requires Ronconkuma LLC to, among other things, bear the costs of condemnation of properties in the Ronconkuma Hub. I'd like to designate the entirety of that condemnation/acquisition agreement as Exhibit 11 for this hearing. Moving now to the second criterion we mentioned at the outset, which is the effect of the Ronconkuma Hub project on the environment and residents of the locality. It should first be noted that the Ronconkuma Hub project includes Town Board adoption of a comprehensive land use plan for the Ronconkuma Hub, a proposed Ronconkuma Hub Transit-Oriented Development or TOD zoning district to cover the Ronconkuma Hub, comprehensive zoning regulations governing redevelopment and use of properties within the TOD district, and an urban renewal plan for the Ronconkuma Hub. The Ronconkuma Hub project also encompasses actual redevelopment of the Ronconkuma Hub in accordance with the hub TOD zoning regulations. in accordance with the Hub TOD zoning regulations. The Ronconkama Hub project has already been subjected to a comprehensive multi-year review pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE for short, which has comprehensively identified and evaluated the potential environmental impacts of the project, including on residents of the locality. This comprehensive environmental impact review has been conducted by the Brookhaven Town Board, acting as SECRE lead agency, and also by other agencies that are involved in the project, including the Brookhaven Planning Board and the IDA. To give just a few milestones of this multi-year SECRE review. On May 12, 2010, the Town Board prepared a Part 1 Environmental Assessment Form, otherwise known as an EAF, to commence SECRE review of the potential environmental impacts of the Ronconkama Hub project. On August 17, 2010, the Town Board issued a SECRE positive declaration, which required preparation of a draft generic environmental impact statement, or DGIS, to evaluate the impacts of the town's proposed adoption of a draft Ronconkama Hub Transit Oriented Development Draft Land Use and Implementation Plan, proposed adoption of a TOD zoning district for the Ronconkama Hub, rezoning of the Ronconkama, excuse me, rezoning of the Ronconkama Hub area into the new TOD zoning district, and ultimate redevelopment of hub properties, including those proposed for condemnation by the IDA in accordance with the Land Use and Implementation Plan and the TOD zoning district regulations. Please bring up Exhibit 12. Now, the Town Board prepared a draft generic environmental impact statement, or DGIS, for the Ronconkama Hub project dated September 2010, first page of which is on the screen. This DGIS, among other things, evaluated a theoretical maximum development scenario for the hub in accordance with the proposed TOD zoning for the hub. I would like to designate the entirety of this DGIS dated September 2010 as Exhibit 12 for this hearing. On September 21, 2010, the Town Board accepted the DGIS as complete and adequate for public review. On October 19, 2010, the Town Board held a public hearing on the DGIS. On October 29, 2010, the comment period on the DGIS closed. Now, because the density is recommended in the town's 2013 urban renewal plan differed from those evaluated in the 2010 DGIS, the Town Board prepared and updated Part 1 Environmental Assessment Form for the Ronconkama Hub project. On October 1, 2013, the Town Board issued a SECRE positive declaration, which required preparation of a supplemental DGIS for the project. Please bring up Exhibit number 13. Here we see the first page of the draft supplemental generic environmental impact statements. And I would like to point out that on November 12, 2013, the Town Board accepted this draft supplemental DGIS or DSGIS as complete and adequate for public review. And I'd like to designate the entirety of this DSGIS as Exhibit 13 for this hearing. Thereafter, on January 9, 2013, the Town Board held a public hearing on the DSGIS. On February 10, I'm sorry, that was January 9, 2014, my apologies. On February 10, 2014, the comment period closed on the DSGIS. Please bring up the next exhibit, number 14. In April of 2014, the Town Board filed a final generic environmental impact statement, or an FGEIS, for the Ronconkama Hub project. And this is the first page of that document on the screen. I'd like to designate the entirety of that FGEIS as Exhibit 14 for this hearing. Please bring up the next exhibit, number 15. On June 24, 2014, the Town Board adopted a SECRE finding statement for the Ronconkama Hub project. The finding statement is the final step in a SECRE review process involving an environmental impact statement. Significantly, the Town Board, in its finding statement, specifically certifies, among other things, that it has considered the relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions disclosed in the environmental impact statement for the project. And also, consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations from among the reasonable alternatives available, the proposed action is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practical, and that adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practical. I would like to designate the entirety of the Town Board's SECRE finding statement as Exhibit 15 for this hearing. And now the next and last exhibit, number 16. On November 18, 2015, the IDA, as a SECRE involved agency, and after review of relevant materials and the Town Board's SECRE finding statement, adopted the Town Board's SECRE finding statement as its own. After finding that the Town Board's finding statement accurately and adequately examined the environmental issues presented by the proposed action. I would like to designate the entirety of the IDA's finding statement, the first page of which you see on the screen, as Exhibit 16 for this hearing. The foregoing brief recap demonstrates that the environmental effects of the Ronconkama Hub have been thoroughly studied in coordination with multiple involved agencies during a comprehensive SECRE review process extending over several years. I respectfully request that the analyses and conclusions of this completed SECRE process be incorporated in the record of this hearing, and that the IDA consider such comprehensive analyses and conclusions in its determinations and findings for this proceeding. In conclusion, it is evident that the Town Board, in preparing and adopting the blight study, the urban renewal plan, the land use and implementation plan, the TOD zoning code, and associated documents, recognized the public need for revitalization of the Ronconkama Hub area. Moreover, through its multi-year environmental review, the Town Board comprehensively identified and evaluated the potential environmental and community impacts of the Ronconkama Hub redevelopment. Accordingly, I respectfully submit that pursuant to Section 204 of the State Environmental, I'm sorry, the State Eminent Domain Procedure Law, the proposed condemnations first will further the public use, benefit, and purpose to be served by the Ronconkama Hub project, and furthermore, will not result in adverse impacts on the environment or residents of the affected community. This concludes my presentation today. I respectfully request that Exhibits 7 through 16, which I have referred to in my presentation, be made part of the official record of today's hearing. As I explained earlier, these exhibits are available for viewing by the board and the public on the IDA's website. Thank you very much.
Exhibits 7 through 16 are marked submitted. Thank you very much, Mr. Wagner. Our next speaker will be Mr. Jim Coughlin.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Correct.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So my name is James L. Coughlin, that's C-O-U-G-H-L-A-N. James, J-A-M-E-S, L. Coughlin. I am a principal of Tri-Tech Real Estate Company. And Tri-Tech, an affiliate of Tri-Tech, is the managing member of Ron Hub LLC, which is the master developer designated by the Town of Brookhaven for the Ronconkama Hub project. I want to thank the members of the IDA Board for holding this important hearing. My role here is to give you some historical perspective, certainly of our involvement and of the development of this area. Sort of by way of background, you know, my brother Bob and I started Tri-Tech in 1986. We've been developing projects here in Suffolk County for over 35 years. We've been fortunate enough to be part of several transformative projects, including New Village of Patchogue, Shipyard in Port Jefferson, The Well in Lindenhurst, and we've recently broken ground on a large transformative mixed-use project in downtown Bayshore. But this project, the Ronconkama Hub, is by far the most transformative project that we've been fortunate enough to be a part of, because if you look at the other projects that I listed, they are all in existing downtown villages that needed a shot in the arm economically and with adding of new residents and businesses. There is no downtown in Ronconkama. One does not exist. The, and you know, if you abide me, I'll just give a little bit of the history of why that's not, why there are no downtowns there. If you look at the Central Suffolk population before the LIE came through, the majority of our population out here, A, was sparse, was not a very densely populated area, and B, was more along the coastlines. And that's where our downtowns and our villages are. But as Arthur Levitt created the first suburb, Levittown, in the post-World War II era, this whole new idea of suburbia started to attract a west-to-east migration out onto Long Island. And Central Suffolk grew very quickly through the 60s, 70s, and 80s. Most of the people that came out, along with the LIE, were, almost all of them, including my family, were, you know, people from the boroughs of New York who were leaving New York to find this new suburbia lifestyle, and they did not want to live near apartments, and they did not want to live near density. They were not creating any nodes of density as the population filled in in the center of the island. And we don't have any downtown villages in Central Suffolk along the spine of the island. And at the same time, the towns, you know, an area in some of the towns, including Ronconkama and the Town of Brookhaven, the zoning around the train station was where they put uses that people also didn't want to live near. You know, truck repair and lawn chemical companies and daily pay fee parking lots and, and so there's, there was, you know, an area there that was sort of, let's put stuff where people don't want to live, we'll put things that people don't want to live near. But at the same time that all this population grew through Central Suffolk at a very dramatic pace, so did the use of the LIRR. And the train station, particularly through the 70s and the 80s, really started to become almost like a front door for the community. You had, you know, many of our residents going there every morning, coming home at night, often in the dark, sending them and their family members on trains to go to games and shows, and inviting their relatives out from the boroughs or other areas to say, come see what Long Island is like. And it became very clear in the late 1980s that the local community, really led by the civics and the chambers of commerce, began to petition the town to say, you know, this is our front door and we don't like it. You know, we're not proud of our front door. It's dirty, it's blighted, sometimes, sometimes often unsafe. And, and we really need to do something about making it a place that is, doesn't bring our community down, but rather elevates and lifts up our community. And the town took that outcry from the community to heart and started to do studies, as John just laid out so eloquently, but all the research and studies that they've done to determine what should be there. And obviously, what all those studies determine should be there is a downtown, a downtown that's walkable, inviting, friendly with public spaces, and, and entertainment and essential retail and offices, as well as denser housing. So the town undertook all those studies in the 90s and the 2000s, and as John alluded to so articulately, you know, they adopted several, several results of those studies, particularly between 2010 and 2011. And in 2011 is when, as you pointed out, they decided to form a committee to try to get input for a private developer. So they issued a request for expression of interest in 2011. And I think they got, I don't quote me on the email, but they got many, many responses. I think it was a dozen responses from developers, both local and national developers. They had formed a committee of 18 people to, to assess these developers. The committee was made up of representatives from the Town of Brookhaven government, Town of Islay government, Suffolk County government, the IDAs from both towns, the IDA from the county, local civic groups, chambers of commerce, as well as other community leaders. When they received those proposals, not proposals, but, you know, responses to the RFEI, they whittled it down to a handful that they thought were best, most likely to be qualified, and they issued a request for qualifications. And I think it's super important to recognize that they did not issue a request for proposal. They weren't looking for a developer to come in and tell the town what they thought should go there and what the, what project the developer wanted to build. They were looking for a developer to show why it was the best developer to be qualified to come in and implement the vision of all the studies that John, that John alluded to. In 2012, that committee unanimously selected Tri-Tech as the master developer, and we signed our master developer designation agreement. Paramount in that agreement, from a developer's perspective, is the town was committed to use eminent domain if needed to assure that the entire project could actually get built. We at Tri-Tech were committing to an awful lot of upfront expense, including high seven figures of just planning, legal studies, environmental reviews, design, et cetera, to support all those studies that John put into record. But also lining up capital for the upfront public infrastructure that needed to go in to make this transformation possible. We had to build a approximately $50 million worth of public infrastructure, mostly in the form of a sewer system and road improvements and utility improvements. The sewer was over $35 million. We've been investing in that infrastructure since 2012. Sewer is complete. That sewer, we were required to build a 1.5 million gallon per day sewer treatment facility to take waste from this area and send it down to sewer district number three on the South Shore. The Ronconkama Hub, when it's fully built out, will only need 400,000 gallons a day. The extra 1.1 million gallons per day are available to allow economic development in the entire Central Suffolk region, and will also provide a a huge resource to take waste that's currently going into our water supply and removing it out to be treated. You know, for example, the MacArthur Airport is on septic. I found that personally hard to believe when I first learned that, looking into this project, that now that we are complete with our regional facility, that airport can connect and take waste out of the ground and send it down, send it down to be treated and take it out of our water supply. Also, to date, we've invested in significant upgrades of the roads and utilities around it. That total road infrastructure is going to be north of 15 million. I can tell you that there is no way that we at Tri-Tech or any other developer could have attracted, you know, the 50 million for infrastructure and the high seven figures for planning and legal to start the project if there was no assurance that we could acquire all the property and the project could actually be completed. There would be absolutely no way to attract that capital, all that private capital. In addition, we were able to complete the Phase 1, the Alston at Station Square, where we purchased four mostly vacant, environmentally tainted industrial buildings, and we converted them into six new buildings with 489 new homes with numerous amenities. Without the town's commitment, we would never have been able to attract $170 million of capital that was committed to that project to complete it, and it's been a tremendous success, substantially beyond all projections, and it's over 94% leased already and over 90% occupied. We also closed on the financing for Phase 2A of the project, which incorporates some of that downtown, and I should revert back to Phase 1. Nobody would have invested in Phase 1 if it was going to sit there at the tail end of an industrial blighted area. The people that invested in Phase 1 invested there because they knew that the project could be carried out largely due to the commitment on eminent domain and that all of the future phases, which include the essential retail and that all of the future, future phases, which include the essential retail and the public, and the public green and the, and, and the office space, that all that was going to be able to be accomplished. And we started a lot of that now in phase two. We closed on two hundred and fifty six million dollars of capitalization for phase two back in August. And phase two will include a large village green open to the public, seventy three thousand square feet of retail, which will include both essential services, restaurants and entertainment venues, and three hundred and eighty eight new homes, highly amenitized residential buildings, and sixteen thousand square feet of office space. We at Tritech, we believe so much in, in the, the positive environment being created there that we signed a lease with our partners for our company, Tritech, to move all of our employees into that office space. We truly believe that that is going to provide us with an environment that allows us to attract and retain the absolute best talent available on Long Island. And we really can't, can't wait to move in. But again, we'd never get this two hundred and fifty six million dollars without an assurance that the whole rest of the area is not going to remain blighted. So in total, Tritech has brought more than four hundred and thirty five million dollars of investment into the Ronconkoma Hub. And when we're finished, that investment will certainly exceed seven hundred and fifty million. This is and will be creating over eleven thousand jobs, both temporary and permanent. And based on our history and other downtown revitalization projects, you know, our seven fifty plus million is going to result in well over a billion dollars of economic activity in the, in the Ronconkoma Hub region. Also, you know, blighted old industrial uses of being turned into walkable mixed use environments with, with welcoming public spaces increases the value of the homes in this immediate area tremendously, as it has in our other projects. Obviously, walking from your home, if you're, if you live a few hundred yards from this project and walking to what is there now is not adding value to your home. But if there's a nice public green and highly amenitized and a fun place to go that you can walk home from after you enjoy whatever it is you want to enjoy downtown, that does add value to your home, just as it has in the areas that we've worked in in Patchogue, Lindenhurst, Port Jeff, et cetera. So I think, I think if you just even just look at the, the phase one before and after photos, the, the obvious transformative impact of this type of investment is, is, is evident. To date, we've, we've, we've acquired fourteen parcels, all through private negotiation. You know, we've, we've paid above appraised value. We've amended the pricing, timing, the conditions of purchase to meet each and every, each and every seller's needs. We intend to continue private negotiations for every parcel in the project area. Over the past nine years, we have contacted every property owner. Some of the future phase owners haven't been spoken to in a few years. But right before the IDA sent the public notice for this hearing, we sent out a letter to update each property owner to let them know that we are committed to, to continuing private negotiations and we will. However, there have been some property owners who have refused offers that are well above, well above appraised value and some that have not negotiated in good faith. And that is why we need this process to continue to move forward to ensure that this project can actually reach completion. So if, so I'm just set back for a second. Yeah, the project here overall has, has also enjoyed support at every single layer of government. So the state has committed fifty million dollars for the parking infrastructure in the overall project. The county worked with Tritech on facilitating the sewer facility. The town has led the way on all the rezonings and all those studies you just saw and the secret review and the site plan analysis and approvals, building permits and countless other hurdles to, to get their vision implemented here. All the local civic associations and chambers of commerce have been supportive and all of the regional business and labor organizations have been extremely supportive. This is an amazing public-private partnership that was truly driven by the community's outcry as being implemented by a master developer. Again, we appreciate the IDA board for holding this important hearing and we ask you to keep this important transformation moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coghlan. All right, we have now reached the portion in our hearing for public comment. And I see that the first person on our list of attendees who wishes to speak is identified as Mr. Tim McCarthy. If we can, Mr. Belniak, can we enable Mr. McCarthy's microphone? And I'm going to ask that he identify himself, give his address, spell his name, and relate his connection to this project.
Excellent. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. My name is Tim McCarthy, T I M M C C A R T H Y. I'm a business representative with IBW Local Twenty Five, which is located in Hop Dog, New York. So I wanted to, just to voice my enthusiastic support for this project. Looking at the master plan here, it's, it's really only just started. Like has been said, there have been commitments to allow this project to see its way through to completion. And we absolutely, wholeheartedly would like to urge the board to continue the support for whatever needs to be done to allow this project to see its final vision. These TODs are a really super intelligent use of the sites and these parcels. And, you know, just look at first phase, it's an amazing facelift to the area. And we're really excited to see development through the area and continue with the, the instant beautification. So these, these projects, you know, I'm sure people are going to get into the economic growth of it and the numbers. But as far as a labor standard is, is concerned, you know, these projects have put countless hours, man hours for membership, and our membership lives in the area. So, you know, again, we, we support this. We'd like to see the board do whatever it needs to do to continue with its, its process, be it eminent domain or permitting and whatnot. And again, thank you for your time. I'd like to see this through.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy. That concludes your remarks.
That concludes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is identified as Ms. Jen DiCipio. Ms. DiCipio, can we unmute her microphone? And may I ask you again, if you would state your name, spell it for us, give us your address and your connection to this project?
Um, it's actually, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's actually Micah DiCipio. I'm sorry, my wife.
Okay, no problem. So your name is Michael DiCipio? Good evening.
Micah, M I C A H D I S I P I O. Address is sixty seven Railroad Avenue, Ronconkoma. I'm a property owner there.
Good evening, Mr. DiCipio.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Hey, um, good afternoon, everyone. To begin, I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time to listen to me. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my concerns and explain the value and worth of my property. As I said, my name is Micah DiCipio. And for the last twenty years, I have been the proud property owner of sixty seven Railroad Avenue in Ronconkoma. This is where I built and currently run Micah D's barber shop. I'd like to think that over the years, we have become a staple in this community. Owning a property in this location has been a great blessing to me. Not only am I directly in front of the Ronconkoma train station, where there's a lot of foot traffic and a lot of commuters, but I'm also located on the border of two major school districts, Dayton, where my four children attend, and Kenequa School District. I've been very lucky to be able to serve these two wonderful communities. Both have been unbelievably supportive over the last two decades and even more so during these past two years. Since taking ownership over twenty years ago, I've employed many young men from these communities. Through my apprenticeship program, I have helped dozens get their apprentice and master's barber's license that they can start a business of their own. I have worked with many local youth sport teams and donated time, money, and services to help support our young athletes. I've donated to many local schools with fundraising events and I've also been privileged enough to donate my time to several different St. Paul's events in the neighborhood. Sixty seven Railroad Avenue is way more than just a building. To me, it has become a place where all my employees and all my customers have become a family. Owning property within this general location is needed to ensure the protection of my entire family's future. I understand the purpose of the Ronconkoma Hub is to improve the well-being of this area. But I have been doing this since nineteen ninety nine. I've continuously put pride, effort, and dedication into improving the value of my property, property that has served the community for over twenty years. How can someone come along and take the worth of this property without fair compensation? How are small businesses not valued more in the town of Brookhaven? This is where the IDA needs to step in and advocate for those of us who have been doing our part to improve the community instead of letting this huge company with unlimited resources take advantage of us. I've been in contact with Tritech for three years now and have expressed all my concerns. I was told numerous times that I have nothing to worry about, that they will leave me better than they found me, that they don't want to hurt my business or use eminent domain. Yet the only offer from Tritech just came, came just a few days before I received a letter of possible condemnation. The timing and the, the amount of this offer shows a complete lack of respect of my property and business that I have worked so hard to build. Why wasn't an offer made sooner? I've been ready to make a deal so I can go on doing business without interruption and continue to support my family and employees.
Mr. DiCipio, your time has expired, but I will allow you additional time to complete your remarks.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
You can complete your remarks.
Thank you very much. I've been ready to make a deal so I can go on doing business without interruption and continue to support my family and employees. The only offer I received wasn't even enough to buy a similar property in the area, let alone paying for the planning, building, and relocation of a replacement property. Why should I have to start all over and spend money out of my pocket to build what I have already built and have already paid for? I'm not interested in renting. Leasing in the area would at least quadruple my overhead. By leasing a spot, I also lose the benefit of owning my land and lose the possibility of passing that land to one of my children. Real estate property, real estate prices are at an all time high and people are routinely paying way over market value. This needs to be considered when coming up with a fair offer, allowing me to compete in the current market. The cost of building and building supplies have also been seeing record highs. This too needs a lot of consideration to assure a smooth relocation with no time out of work or money out of pocket. I don't want to speak too much on other properties, as I'm sure you will hear from some of them today. However, I will say this, in a case like this, each property should be individually assessed. We all have different uses for our buildings and homes and therefore all have different needs moving forward. There should be consideration for those of us who have worked so hard to improve our property and contribute to our town. This, there is a big difference between a small business who has served the community for over twenty years and an absentee landlord who has done nothing to better their property or their tenants or contribute to this area. I'm hoping the IDA will intervene and help advocate for the high overall value that some of these properties hold. It is important to acknowledge that some of these properties out to the small businesses that help contribute to Brookhaven's economic growth. In closing, I would like to be clear that I'm not trying to stop this project. I am simply asking for what was promised. Fair deal, a place to own, someplace nearby to run my business without interruption. This property is worth way more than just an appraiser coming in and comparing it to other physical properties in the area. In a case like this, where I'm being forced to sell my land that I paid for and move my business, all of these factors mentioned need to be considered when value is being determined. There needs to be more of an effort to meet our needs from Tritech. Members of the IDA, I'm afraid if you grant the use of eminent domain, these needs will never be met and my business may never be able to recover. It has already suffered a great deal since the pandemic. And if I didn't own my property during these troubling times, I'm not sure I would have been able to keep the doors open and continue to do what I love to do and provide for my family and employees. Board members of the IDA, this is our community, these are our small businesses, these are our people that help contribute to the success of our town. We are trying and with a little support from you, I am certain we can come to a reasonable agreement without using eminent domain and destroying what I've worked so hard for. I truly thank you for your time and I am hoping that together we can all move forward with a fair and reasonable outcome to help protect small business in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. DiCipio. Our next speaker is indicated on the screen as P Sorrentino. May we enable that person's microphone? And may I ask that person, when he or she speaks, identify yourself, spell your name, your address, and your connection to this property, please?
Yes, my name is Phil Sorrentino.
Good evening, Mr. Sorrentino. How are you?
I'm, I'm well. Yourself?
Good.
It's P H I L S O R R E N T I N O. I live in Lake Grove, New York, on Stony Brook Road. And Ronconkoma Hub is our hub where we go into the city or my children go into the city. I've, I've, I've actually spoken about this project when it first started. They, they did a wonderful job. I love the first part of it. It came out gorgeous and looking forward to the next phases and kind of completing it. We want to, to have a, a train station that's safe to navigate, safe to come in. I have a daughter who's twenty three. She goes into the city, she goes see her friends and whatever. And I want to be able to feel comfortable with her going in and out of that train station. I, I urge the, the board to continue support on it. It's a, I think it's very important for, for our, for our safety and for our children's safety and, and to be able to make, make the Ronconkoma Hub someplace that you'd want to go and not avoid. And I just, I, I wish that they, they keep on the, the support and we get this project completed, whatever needs to get done and, and move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sorrentino. Our next speaker is indicated on the screen as, it looks like, pardon me, Artie C. Paletti. Would that person please identify himself or herself, state your name, address, and connection to this project? May we enable that person's microphone?
Yes, they have. There they go.
Good evening. This is Artie Cipoletti, A R T I E C I P O L E T T I.
Good evening, Mr. Cipoletti.
Thank you, IDA board members. I, I have a business located in Islip, New York. I was involved with the construction of phase one. And I'd like to just speak briefly about what I've seen and what I see in the future of it. Tritech has already proven, proven themselves with the construction of phase one. Phase one has shown meaningful strides for the benefit of the community. Phase two and beyond are essential to continue to further realize the vision of a greater Ronconkoma. I firmly believe that. Tritech, I also believe, is the team that every township wants to partner with. Looking at past experience with Lindenhurst, Port Jefferson, and Patchogue, those areas have been revitalized to make them destination locations. And that's something that we all strive to have. I urge you, do not leave Ronconkoma halfway. The blight is being replaced with beautiful, walkable community and its proximity to rail and air transportation is poised to become the next destination location on Long Island, a true renaissance, something that can't be replaced. I strongly encourage you to continue to work with them to the greatest extent possible and look forward to the community revitalization and the beautiful community that's going to be brought forth by the Tritech team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cipoletti. Our next speaker is Mario Matera. And may we, when we enable his microphone, I ask him to please state his name, spell it, and state his address and connection to this project.
We'll do just one more reminder for folks there. Star nine on the telephone, if you'd like to raise your hand. Star nine does the same as raise hand. And Mr. Matera, you should have a command sent to you twice now to unmute. See if that works.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good, okay.
Yes, hello, this is Richard Brooks. Mario Matera forwarded over me the email.
So you are, you are Mr. Richard Brooks?
Yes.
Go ahead.
R I C H A R D B R O O K S. I live at nineteen Franco Lane in Sotoket, New York. Okay.
And your connection to the project?
Yep, I am, first of all, I would like to thank the IDA board. I'm the financial secretary treasurer of Plumbers Local Two Hundred. I represent- I represent approximately eleven hundred members and eighty percent of my members and family live in the town of Brookhaven. I feel we need this to continue this project, the Rockonkama Hub, for our region, economy and for all of Long Island. Also for construction jobs and permanent jobs to bring the proper growth to our community from a depressed area that needs the proper revitalization. Tri-Tech is the answer to help this right revitalization for our future growth. Tri-Tech worked with the community, the fire department, Rockonkama Civic, Rockonkama Chamber and most importantly, Rockonkama Community. Myself and Plumbers Local 200 and members and families are in favor of this project to move forward with all phases. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. Our next speaker, I'm sorry, yes? Our next speaker on the list of people who've indicated they wish to speak is Anthony Confredo. May we unmute his microphone and ask him to state his name, spell it and indicate his address along with his connection to this project?
Hi, my name is Anthony Confredo, A N T H O N Y C O N F R E D O. I live at two Bucknell, B U C K N E L L Lane in Stony Brook, New York, one one seven nine zero.
Good evening, Mr. Confredo. Please provide us with your comments.
Yes, how are you doing today, sir?
I'm very good.
The IDA Board for everything that they're doing here today. And I'd like to also thank Tri-Tech for what they are bringing to Long Island. As everybody has said, along with the comments and what Mr. Coghlan has said, is it's very important to revitalize what we have here today because we're trying to attract people to Long Island. Very important, which I think a lot of people are not remembering is all the work that has been brought here with the sewers. I mean, it, it's gonna open up a, a whole new area for us with Veterans Highway, the airport. It's gonna help with expansion to the south side of the railroad. I mean, it's gonna create a tremendous amount of tax revenue for the town of Brookhaven and for Suffolk County. I mean, these are all things that are very important. And let's not forget, what about the safety for our families? That we could travel, that we could go into Rockonkama, that we could travel in and out of the city. And not only that, we could add more talent to Long Island where people could come from all over the place to come here and work and help bring their money into our area. The amount of jobs that they have created so far has been amazing. I mean, actuality that the old saying, the proof is in the pudding. I mean, look at what they created. What has been done to Patchogue is amazing. Then you add the well in Lindenhurst, the shipyard at Port Jeff. The list goes on and on. And the first phase came out beautiful. So I really look forward to continued success and the total change to Rockonkama and how nice it would be to go walk down there with your family and not worry about something happening. Very, very important to me and my family and I hope it's important to everybody else's family. And I'd like to thank the IDA for their time and I wish Tri-Tech and their team continued success. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Confredo. Our next speaker is indicated as Julia Floyd Ventura. May we unmute her microphone and ask that she state her full name, her address and if she would spell her name and her connection to this property, to this project?
Good evening. My name is Julia Floyd Ventura, J U L I A F L O Y D hyphenated V E N T U R A. I reside at twenty-six Cynthia Drive in Farmingville, New York. Why I'm on this call is because, you know, I do have a very, very good connection through my son and the children of Sachem School District. I actually have been taking that Long Island Railroad since it was a diesel train and it was one little building and so I've been seeing the up and coming changes of Rockonkama and I don't think that's what my friend Micah was saying. I have to speak to Mr. Cocklin, if I can please, from Tri-Tech. I'm gonna kindly just use your words because you said best talent, positive environment. That's what you would like to bring to Rockonkama and we welcome that. But I would like to say that my son personally goes to that barber shop and many, many children, many, many children have learned, grown. And if you want that in your environment, I think that is one of the best places that you could, you would want in that area. Because you go into that environment and you have such a positive atmosphere and it's nothing that should be cut short. So I'm asking and I'm pleading you to please, when you lay your head on your pillow tonight, do the right thing for that family's business. Because I only go there as a business, but my son will go no other place. I feel safe leaving him there. I've been watching children and every event that they get involved in is family owned. That's what should be representing Rockonkama. And, and that is a safe place. So yes, I know it does not look like what we wanted to and we welcome a change. But if you can find it in your heart to help this family's business, if it's going to lose its business, you're affecting a family. So, and many, many children that have special needs that choose to go to Micah D's barber shop because they feel welcome and they feel safe. So that's what I'm pleading for. I don't know the terms of seventeen and sixteen exhibit A hubs or the LLCs. That's not what I'm calling about. That's, I'll leave that to you. But I'm kindly asking you to help this family because it's the right thing to do. That's all I have to say. Thank you for my time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Floyd Ventura. Our next speaker is Jen DiCipio. Would she please identify herself, spell her name, address and connection to the property?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer DiCipio. Jennifer is J E N N I F E R. DiCipio is D I S I P I O. My address is fifty-six Crestwood Lane, Farmingville, New York. And I have, my interest in the property is the spouse of a property owner and a mother of children who benefit from the business run out of that property. I, like many of the people that have spoken tonight, am a proud member of the town of Brookhaven. I grew up in Brookhaven. I stayed in Brookhaven and I now raise my family in Brookhaven. Like the gentleman that spoke from Brookhaven, Stony Brook, Satoket areas, they all want to see a safe environment, a thriving environment. I could not agree more. I don't disagree with the plans to better our local Rockonkama hub. It can only benefit our family business. What I do disagree with is the fact that mostly everything we have heard tonight is in regards to the major evaluations and the major money that has been invested in this project. And there's really been no talk of what's going to happen to the existing thriving businesses. Where are the cost analysis and the, you know, research plans, all of that for the families that own property currently? There hasn't been much talk of that. The only talk that we have heard of doesn't help our future. It doesn't fairly compensate us where we can even make a move of, you know, an equivalent situation. Again, we are not opposing this project. We are all for, you know, bettering our town, bettering our surroundings. These are the place, you know, this is the place that we call home. This is the place that we want our children to be proud of. We want our children to feel safe in. But I think that some are failing to recognize that we have some of these values there that are already existing. And it seems that nobody really cares about the small few businesses that are there and that are thriving and they should be incorporated in the future of this development. So I, I know I'm running out of time and this was a last minute decision to speak. But my point is truly that we want to see the environment, the area, everything do well. We're not opposed to, you know, all of the wonderful benefits that can come from this renovation. However, it is our priority to be able to remain in this area and, you know, enjoy some of the positive changes to come because this is the environment that we personally have been dumping our, our time, our dedication, our energy, everything into for the last twenty years. So please keep that into consideration when we are just shoved out of our current property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. DiCipio. We have exhausted the list of attendees who wish to speak. However, if anyone wishes to speak, they should, as we indicated earlier, indicate star nine and we will identify them. Ah, I see some additional people who wish to speak. The next speaker I see is a person who's, has a telephone number ending in four, three, five. Would that person please be unmuted, state your name, your address and spell it and tell us your interest in this project?
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name's Tom Tintle, T O M T I N T L E. Sorry, I wasn't able to be on the Zoom, but I wanted to call in so I had a chance to speak. I live on Arlington Street in Patchogue. I just wanted to speak in favor of this project for Tri-Tech development. I, about five years ago, I had to shut down. We had a place on Rockonkama Avenue that we did business out of. We actually got rid of that location just because of the decline happening within the area. So I personally feel strongly with everything Tri-Tech's trying to do with boosting the area and rental apartments and businesses to come in, along with the dining and nightlife will really boost things up in that area, give the faceless that's needed where maybe we could have kept that location that we had to shut down five years ago. On top of that, I, I lived in Levittown for about twenty-eight years and I just moved out to Patchogue about two years ago now. And when I bought the house out in Patchogue, everybody was telling me ten, fifteen years ago how undesirable of a place that was to live. And I would always respond to them, well, you know, ten, fifteen years ago I was in college. I didn't know anything about Patchogue. And I would argue right now that Patchogue is one of the most buzzing areas to live in on Long Island between everything they have going on. I feel incredibly safe here. I look forward to raising my family here. And a big thanks to that is to the guys at Tri-Tech and other developers in the area that came in and revitalized this downtown that so many people felt very negatively towards for so many years. And I would happily sit and have a conversation with any of them about how great of an area it has become. So I, I just feel very strongly that everything I'm doing will resemble what happened out in Patchogue and it'll be the best for that Rockonkama area. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tintle. Our next speaker is indicated as Tom Cook. Can we unmute his mic and Mr. Cook, if you would state your name, your address, spell it and state your connection to this project?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Tom Cook, T O M C O O K, as easy as they come. My address is twenty-seven Alexander Avenue and I am in Blue Point. I'm calling to speak in support of the completion of this project. I use the Rockonkama train station quite often and just with Phase One, you could really tell the positive impact it has had on the surrounding area. And I'm hoping to see it through to, to completion. I've worked with Tri-Tech in the past on their Lindenhurst project. I live a couple of blocks away from their Patchogue project and they are a top-notch company to work with and to deal with and, you know, like I said, I'm hoping to, to see it through.
Thank you. You've concluded your remarks.
I've concluded my remarks. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Cook. All right, our next speaker is indicated as MJ. May we unmute MJ's microphone and can that person please state his or her name, address, spell it if you would, your name and your connection to this project?
Yes, hello. My name is Mary Jane Bourgao, M A R Y J A A N E B O U R G A O. I live in Farmingville. I'm calling to say I've watched this whole meeting and I'm very happy that Tri-Tech is using union labor. I come from a family of union members, my husband, my sons, my dad. So I'm happy to see that. It puts a lot of people to work, especially in these times. I also have a personal interest in one of the businesses in the hub, my son-in-law and I'm just asking Tri-Tech to give him fair compensation. He's a hardworking man. He has a family. He has four children. His wife is a nurse that dealt with a big portion of COVID and is still dealing with it. They are a hardworking family. My four grandchildren go to Sachem Schools. I'm just asking for a fair price for my son-in-law. He deserves it. He's put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into his shop for the last twenty years. It is a wonderful place. He's a wonderful man, even though he's my son-in-law, he's a wonderful man and I'm sure most people in the community would agree with me. He's very involved in the community. He's a man of faith. And I, I, I'm just asking Tri-Tech for a fair, a fair compensation for his property that he owns. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bourgao. Our next speaker is Mr. Ryan Marta. May we ask Mr. Marta's microphone to be unmuted and Mr. Marta, if you would tell us your name, your address and your connection to this property and you'll spell your name, please?
Hello, this is actually Brandon, B R A N D O N Marto, M A R T O, speaking on behalf of Ryan. I reside at twelve Ardito Court in Lake Rockonkama. I've lived in the Brookhaven Township my entire life and, you know, we own and operate a family, family business that is pro the development at the Rockonkama Hub. I think, you know, they would employ countless construction workers and engineers and auxiliary parties along with all the labor that would come through and the careers that would start through after the completion of construction. And I think it's a great opportunity to revitalize and bring some sunshine to a cloudy spot that we've all grown accustomed to. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marta. Our next speaker is a person who's indicated as Joe Lee. Would Mr. Lee's microphone be unmuted? And could he please state his name, his address and connection to this property and if you'd spell your name, please?
One moment, board. Joe is using an older version of Zoom, so I need to temporarily make Joe a panelist for the meeting. So Joe, your screen is gonna flicker for a moment. You're gonna temporarily be brought across as a panelist for your three minutes. So I'm going to send a command to you. You need to accept it in order to come across as a panelist. All right, Joe, you're across as a panelist. You should now be able to unmute. Joe, to unmute the command should be in the lower left corner of your screen. There you go. Thank you, Joe.
Very good. Good evening. It's Mr. Lee?
No, my name is Joe Urban. U R B A N.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Urban. Would you spell your last name? You just did. U R B A N, yes? And your address, please?
I live at two thirty-seven Carroll Avenue, which is in the midst of this project. I've lived here for close to fifty years. I own a home here and a good sized piece of property. And this whole project, I mean, I'm hearing all the pluses. I'm hearing all about the good that, that, that Tri-Tech has done. Now they talk about the blighted area. The blighted areas by the railroad, why did they start over by Mill Road if the blighted area was by railroad, by the railroad, number one? Why are prop, property owners? Why aren't we permitted to develop our own property? Okay. Then they're showing blighted areas. They showed one area that's supposed to be blighted, which is the back of properties on, on Hawkins Avenue, which the town on, on Hawkins Avenue, which the town should be maintaining. And they're letting, letting it turn into a sewer, which is only creating more blight. Also, the area on Hawkins Avenue, south of the, of the Long Island Expressway looks like a slum, but that's because of the fact that town of Brookhaven isn't maintaining it. If you go on the north side of Long Island Expressway, you'll see it's a much different picture. The road has been repaved. The area that divides the north and southbound lanes is maintained and has nice bushes. The south side looks like a sewer and the town doesn't maintain it. I mean, this is obvious as the nose on your face. And then another thing is, I'd like to know who's funding this project? Who's funding, who's funding this project? Could I get an answer to that question? Who is funding this project?
Mr. Urban, this hearing is to allow for people who are in attendance to make statements. And questions will be answered at an appropriate time, but not at this point. So your, your question is now part of the record.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Urban. All right. Our next speaker is indicated as Mike K. Can Mr. K please, when his microphone is unmuted, identify himself? And spell his name and give us his address and connection to this project.
Sure. Give me one moment while I take care of Joe Urban because of the extra step we had to do. Pardon me for one moment. Mike K, you should now be allowed to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Michael Keveney, M I C H A E L, last name K E A V E N Y. My address is 403 Avalon Pines Drive in Quorum. I just wanted to speak very briefly. I grew up in Ronkonkoma. I went to school at Sachem High School. Like most people on here are saying, I think it's a no-brainer that the Ronkonkoma train station definitely needs a lot of attention and a facelift, and I think this is a great project. However, as somebody who's been a customer of Micah D's Barber Shop for the past 20 years, you know, to hear the stories of that he could just be forced out and not compensated fairly breaks my heart. That barber shop has literally been a staple of our community for Sachem School District, for Connect Quad School District. My entire life, there isn't anybody in either of those school districts that doesn't know about Micah D's Barber Shop and all the great work they've done. As somebody who also works in the building supply industry and sells building supplies every day, I have four to five emails every day about rising costs of material. And I strongly, strongly ask you guys to consider all of that when compensating these businesses that you're leaving no choice. While yes, it's a great project. It's going to bring growth to the community. It's going to make my parents' house value in Ronkonkoma go up. It's going to employ, you know, thousands of people. It has so many good points, but we can't forget about the small businesses and the families that are going to be directly affected. You know, to not compensate somebody the way they should be so they could just go and open up their business elsewhere. They're not asking for anything crazy. They're asking for fair compensation. And with today's rising building costs that are going up literally every single day, as somebody who's in the industry, I strongly, strongly, strongly ask that to be considered when uprooting some of these businesses for a project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kevin. Our next speaker is Mr. Keith McNamara. May we unmute Mr. McNamara's microphone? And when we do, could you please state your name, spell it? And your address and your connection to this project?
How you doing? My name is Keith.
Good, how are you?
K E I T H M C, capital N, A M A R A. I currently live at 12 Targo Lane in Center East, New York. I grew up in Ronkonkoma. My parents still live there. Like Mr. Coglan alluded earlier, you know, my, my family grew up in Queens. We relocated out to Ronkonkoma. They had lived this suburban dream and have a piece of property without a concrete lawn. I remember my father telling me stories when he was younger, he grew up in Brooklyn, coming out to visit Lake Ronkonkoma and stay in a bungalow for his vacation. So, you know, obviously that landscape has changed. I graduated from Connectwood High School. And over the years, growing up, I have seen that area degraded and businesses go away, businesses somewhat come. But it seems like it's time that, you know, that this is, this comes about and it cleans up the area. My parents included and many of my friends and relatives still live in Ronkonkoma on both sides of the train tracks. And whenever they want to leave or go out to dinner or entertainment-wise, they leave the community. So their hard-earned dollars are spent in someone else's community, you know, whether it be, you know, a different township, different locality, different area. And, you know, I think that's just silly. And, you know, we all see the projects that Tri-Tech has done and the beautification of it, which we're not, I don't think anyone is attesting. And obviously the safety around the train station is sketchy and skeptical. So I think that'll improve it. And knowing Tri-Tech, you know, for, for several years now, I do feel confident that they will do the thing, the, the right thing by the local businesses. I could be as, his barber shop has, I've known that, that barber shop as well over 20 years. Many of my friends go there and still go there. So I'm confident that they will do the right thing, Michael, for your barber shop and the other local business, if any, when the time comes with. But, you know, I urge the IDA to move forward with this and, you know, just continue the beautification of downtown Ronkonkoma and make it a spot where maybe people from other communities come spend their hard-earned money and hours. That concludes my statement. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNamara. That concludes the list of people who have indicated as attendees they wish to, oh, I have a new one. I'm going to recognize him in a minute. But may I urge anyone who wishes to speak who's not already spoken, if you wish to do so, just dial star nine to raise your hand. And so our next speaker is Mr. Richard Macchio. May we unmute him? And when we do, may we ask Mr. Macchio if he would please state his name, spell it, and state his address and his connection to this project?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Richard Macchio, R I C H. Last name Macchio, M A C C H I O. I'm a resident in Bohemia, 1453 Pine Avenue.
Hello, Mr. Macchio. Please give us your statement.
Sure, I'll be, I'll be brief. I just wanted to echo the comments made by Micah Disipio, the business owner of Micah D's Barber Shop at 67 Railroad Avenue. I, I was a resident in Lake Grove, grew up there, went to Sachem High School. I'm now a resident in Bohemia. My kids will go to Connectwood High School. I've been a customer of Micah's shop for about 21 years. Now my son, who's three years old, sees Micah about once a month. So again, I just want to echo the comments that Mr. Disipio made and I think a few other folks raised tonight, just addressing the specific analysis, the impact to the small businesses, specifically Micah's shop at 67 Railroad Avenue. Just want to further understand where in the studies, the specific analysis and research was done for the, the impact to the small businesses, the, the owners, the employees and their well-being. So I hope, I hope, I hope things move forward with the project. And I hope the right thing is done by the small, small business owners. And I appreciate the time everyone's given to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macchio. All right. Again, we have exhausted the list of attendees who wish to speak. If there are any additional attendees who wish to speak, you may do so again by indicating star nine to raise your hand. I'll wait a few moments in order to see if there are any individuals who've not already spoken. I am seeing no additional individuals who have indicated they wish to speak. And so with that weight, and you may email any, any meeting, any meeting or project-related documents or questions to, and I'll provide the email address again. J L I N S E at Brookhaven NY, and it's B R O K H A V E N N Y, one word, dot gov. And you can, of course, mail them in hard copy to Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, 1 Independence Hill, Farmingville, New York. And I still see no additional attendees. And so I'm now going to turn the meeting back over to Mr. Fred Braun for concluding comments.
You did. There you go. Thank you, Judge Cohen. I will now entertain a motion to conclude the meeting. However, the public hearing will remain open for 30 days until December 16th, 2021. As mentioned earlier, to accept only written correspondence sent to the IDA at Jade Lindsey, L I N S E, at BrookhavenNewYork.gov. I will now entertain, entertain a motion to conclude the meeting. Please identify yourself.
Frank Trotter.
I mean, wait, you speak to the court reporter. You have to be clear.
Yes, thank you very much. Let's do this clearly, please.
Who, who made the motion?
Frank.
Frank Trotter.
Second invite.
And Gary White.
All right. On the roll call, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Scheit?
Yes.
Mr. Trotter?
Yes.
Mr. Braun wrote, yes, the motion passed. Meeting is concluded.
Thank you very much. This does conclude our meeting. Again, the public hearing will remain open for 30 days until December 16th, 2021. As we've mentioned earlier, to accept written correspondence sent to the IDA. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.